April thirteenth, Monroe City Board of Education meeting, call the order, real file please.
Mitch Ledbetter.
Here.
Glenn McNish is absent. Lacey Murray here. Rick Chadwick is virtual. Chris Claybo is absent.
Please stand for a moment of silence, followed by the pledge of allegiance. We stand, remain standing, it's a pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Okay, board and guests, I'd like to start our meeting today by recognizing the students that we have pictured on our screens today. If you will remember, last year, we started, a couple of years ago, we started down a program of a middle-college opportunity for students at the high school. Last year, we celebrated four of our students who graduated with their associate's degree prior to walking across the stage with their high school diploma. We were so excited. This year, we've grown that number to ten. Actually, eight. Because two of these students that are listed up here, they graduated with a certificate of mechatronics from Run State. But the other eight will graduate May the fifth with their associate's degree. And a couple of weeks ago, there was a courting ceremony where students received the cords that they will wear during graduation. And so this picture was taken at Run State when they received their cords. So eight of these students will also walk across the stage, May the fifth, at Run State, to receive their associate's degree. And then during our graduation, on May twelfth, they will walk across the stage and get their high school diploma. So this program has doubled in number this year. Next year, we already have students that are enrolling so that they can meet the requirements to accomplish that task. So we're very proud of these students, and I just wanted you to see their pictures. We've celebrated them on social media. It's been in some of our CTE newsletters. But we're very proud of these students and know they have a bright future. We also know how proud their parents are to have a jump start on college. And these students have all received this opportunity through a grant opportunity. So a lot of their first two years of college is not only accomplished and behind them, but also paid for. So the more opportunities we can open up for our students at the high school level, the more that I think we can see good things happen, not only for these families, but for the families to come. So just want to share how this program has doubled in number, and we look forward to continuing to grow as we continue this next year and the following years. So thank you to everybody who's put in a lot of hard work to make this program happen.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Your motion to approve the agenda? Motion for Ms. Murray. Mr. Chadwick. Excuse me, I'm competing.
So I can see, I can see Mr. Chadwick, and I can hear him up here. But he is virtual.
Yeah. All in favor? Say aye. Aye. Any vote. Vote carries three now. You had an opportunity to look at the minutes from the previous meetings. Do I hear a motion to approve the minutes?
Motion.
March ninth meeting, motion from Ms. Murray, second by Mr. Chadwick. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Minutes from the March twenty-third special call meeting. Motion. I'll make a motion to approve the minutes. Second by Ms. Murray. All in favor? Aye. Any vote. Mr. Chadwick says aye. Executive Committee reports. Do you hear a motion to approve the committee reports for the month?
Motion.
Motion by Ms. Murray, second by Mr. Chadwick. All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Vote carries.
Very good.
Going fast.
That is good.
He's at the beach that night. On to new business. Item number nine, approval of Monroe City High School Gym Renovations Project Number Twenty-One Double-O-Four, proposal request number seven.
So at this time, Mr. McDonald is here to share with you information and answer any questions regarding a proposal to add some mechanical systems to our gym project. And so, Mr. McDonald, I'll turn it over to you.
Okay, I've got some images here. I don't know if I'm going to be able to connect or not.
First, let those keys and friends use their cats.
The instructions up there. Yeah. Here we go.
There we go. Very good.
Okay, we're on.
A picture's worth a thousand words.
That's right, yeah. Let me start by, last month, I made the presentation about some changes, and we weren't able to connect with the computer. So I just want to briefly give you overview of what we did there. You can see there, the north wall of the gym, and the units on the wall, and the holes in the walls that will eventually have the new ductwork coming through. And we ran into some issues there, and you can see photographs two, three, and four, where we had some existing structural conduit stuff in the way. So we had to revamp the way we did that opening. And the image you see down below there is just showing you what that will look like when it's all finished, with the ductwork coming through the walls. The duct socks will come straight out, the two in the middle. Two on either ends will come out, turn, and then go out over the gym court. And I've given some sightlines there to show that if you're standing on the top level of the orange seating, and look, you can see all the way across to the other side of the court, and if somebody makes a three-point shot, you know, you're well below the ductwork there. So shouldn't have any issues with height restrictions. And then we're going to do a little bit of trim work around the cow wall windows on either end. And that's just showing you the condition we have there. You see the hole in the steel column there. We need to seal that up. Put some trim around the edge of the windows there and so forth. And the image below is what you would see when it's finished. The ductwork coming across, and again, the heights of everything. We're well below the height required for any kind of sport. That lower line is a volleyball serve, and the higher arc on the left is a three-point basketball shot. Okay, now we get into what we're presenting today, which is the post-quest seven. This is something that we did not originally intend to do, something we were specifically trying to avoid by reusing as much of an existing mechanical system as possible. But as we moved into the project, we discovered things. We tore down ceilings, we tore in the walls. We looked at the existing equipment. It just kept pushing us further and further and further to the point we are today, where we just need to replace it. The old system was obsolete. We didn't have any confidence that once we moved in, it would still perform. So we're going to put in a new system, essentially a couple of units in the concessions that will air-conditioning that space, and then lead out into the lobby. And also, in response to that, we're having to do a little bit of work upstairs to accommodate all these changes. About, out of that fifty-six thousand nine hundred thirty-eight, about fifty thousand of it is related to mechanical systems and the electrical cost. And then, as we move upstairs, photograph on the right, you can see the new steel beams are in that will support the rooftop equipment. And photo number two in the middle just shows a detail, the bracket on the walls that occurs on each end of the beam. And then, bottom photographs five, six, and seven, shows some things that we needed to do down on the western end of that classroom. There were some electrical panels that had masonry walls around them, and then when we tore out the walls that we needed to in order to do the renovation, it left a very unstable four-inch concrete block wall around the panels that I was concerned about. So we just take it out and replace it with drywall. At that end of the classroom, there'll be one shaft that will come up through the floor. And fortunately, we lucked out there, we already had a hole in the floor. And the new ductwork will come up through there behind that electrical panel you see in photograph number six. And it will go up into the ceiling, turn about over to the middle of the space, and turn up in another existing opening in the roof, shown in photo seven. So we're able to reuse existing openings there and not have to cut new ones. So a little love on that. It just worked out to be in the right spot. Also, if you look at photo number four, you notice a couple of areas pointed out in the arrows. Those are gaps in the cover over the existing steel beams on each side of the gym. When the original building was built, they extended the walls up and then plastered around the beams. And so when we took those down, there was little gaps. Some places, there was a wall that ran parallel to the beams. So we had to patch those back in order to maintain the rating. In the boys' and girls' PE locker rooms, those beams and concrete ceiling will be exposed, so we need to finish that off to match everything. And remove all the straps and conduit and other, fill in any holes, smooth it out, and paint it, and that was in the original work. Where that occurs, occurs in storage rooms and things like that. We don't need to pay as much attention to making why it is nice, because it's just storage and mechanical rooms. But we still need to cover it. Something else that came up in doing all this that we still have to address is shown there in photograph number one. When we ripped out the lobby ceiling, that's in the lobby, and we looked up, we saw a couple of things that was troubling. The arrow on there on the left, upper left, you'll see an extension cord that's wired into an outlet box. It's open, there's wires exposed. Apparently, during the nineties, when they did the major renovations of the high school, the lobby was used as temporary kitchen. Equipment was moved in there, served in the kitchen, and dining in the gymnasium. And so they put some drop cords in to plug in the equipment. And then, when they're finished, they just duck them back up to the ceiling. They've been there since. Well, that's obviously a violation of code. We can't live with that. They're going to have to be removed. And then the arrow on the right is showing another outlet box that the lighting is connected to. It's also open. I'm not sure why that is the case, but anyway. And that's the light fixture that we're going to try to reuse. It's coming apart there. And the conduit that serves it is not supported. It was just resting on the light fixtures. So, and some of the cabling that was used to connect the light fixtures are not allowed by code. So now that we've opened that up, we can see it, the fire marshal can see it, and will say, well, we need to correct that. So we'll be correcting that later. Not a huge deal. This is something that needs to be done. That way, everything will be up to code. And so, down at the bottom there, you'll see what the classroom will look like on the upper level. I've shown the floor tile pattern plan on that particular slide. You've got the stairs on either side. There'll be one small vertical shaft at the right-hand end of that classroom where we have an existing panel ductwork coming out. We also had one on the left end, but we've gotten rid of that. So we patched that classroom a little bit, opened it up better. And all-new flooring, vinyl tile flooring, and then there's cabinets and desks at each end of the classroom. And then we have two ADA family restrooms on each end. Can be used when you're using the classroom. Also can be used when you're having people sitting in balcony as well. And the image on the front is what it will look like when it's all finished, and we put the units up on the roof. And we'll have a metal panel screen wall that will cover it up so that you can't see them. And then we'll have the name of the building there. I've just put the guy of Talent Gymnasium on there, because that's what the building is named after. But we, the board, you know, can make a decision as to exactly how they want to put that. If you want to retain that name or put something else. But that will go up here in front. And of course, you have the graphics on the storefront there with the Panther logo and the LC logos on the end there. So there's some landscape walls on either end there that will hide some of the mechanical equipment. So it all should blend in. Everywhere we've had an old mechanical opening, when we covered it up, we were able to salvage enough brick to close those in and blend it in. The new brick will be on those landscape walls. It won't arrive until June. They've got the masonry walls up, split face block at the base. But I hope the weight of the other brick comes in to intercept. The mechanical units that go on the roof ship June first.
I told.
And they were ordered last September.
Yeah.
Tells you how long it takes.
Good luck.
So they'll be arriving in June. By that time, the contractor will be ready to put them up on the roof. The last really unknown that we have to deal with is that roof up there. But there hasn't been any leaks in the roof, so we think it's in pretty good shape. We're going to be completely recovering it anyway. But we want to make sure the deck, it's lightweight concrete deck, make sure that's still secure. So we'll check that out when that occurs. But I'm not anticipating any problems there. So the proposal in front of you is the one for the new mechanical system. It also includes the patching of the beams, the fire marshal requested, plus a little bit of drywall work. A total of fifty-six thousand nine hundred thirty-eight dollars.
How much?
Fifty-six nine thirty-eight and zero cents.
Did you hear that, Rick? Yeah, you saw it. It's okay. Fifty-six thousand nine hundred thirty-eight, huh? Any more good news, or are you going to leave us with that?
Just as a brief update, they're making better progress in the last month. Things moved along quicker as we got through all these other issues and working on a pretty good pace. I'm going to encourage them to pick up the pace even more. Now that they're ready to do work, you know, you've got to bring those workers back, those subs back, and getting them back in, getting them engaged again. It's sometimes a little difficult with all the work going on. But we're pushing them to stay on schedule. And hopefully, there won't be any more delays on getting equipment and things like that. The only thing that has been a little concern is the delivery of the electrical panels. That is extremely long lead time, sometimes as much as a year. But they are scheduled to be delivered this summer. And if push comes to shove, we'll probably just have to temporarily install power, the existing electrical panels. And then when those do arrive, we'll swap them out. So we'll get you up and running as soon as possible.
Is it still looking like the end of July?
Yeah, yeah, we're still in July for the renovation project, and then the AC follow after that. Once we get those units in, we'll see how quickly that goes.
How long does it take, once those, you said the units come in in June?
Yeah.
How long does it take them to install that?
Well, they'll come in one day on a truck with a crane. And they could probably get those mounted on the roof within a day or two. But then, once they set them, then they've got to hook up all the ductwork, build that, and then start the ductwork inside.
How long does that take?
I don't remember the schedule on that, but we're looking at least, you know, a thirty, forty-five day process on that.
So we still have a target completion date of July the twenty-ninth?
Twenty-ninth for the renovation project.
So bathrooms, everything?
Yeah.
Part one that we've done up?
Yeah.
Should be done before we start.
Not the AC.
The steel beams that support the rooftop units should be completed tomorrow. They had them all in the main classroom area, and they were working on the two ends, but they had to, because of the stairs, they had to install a hoist and get those in there. Get those installed. They said that tomorrow, they should have those finished. Then they can come in and start putting in the walls, steel stud walls, drywall at each end of the classroom, and start finishing the space out. So that should move pretty quickly. About got all the rough ends on the east end complete. The west end has fallen behind that a couple of weeks. So they've already been sold with drywall, but being bought more of that going on in this next thirty days. I'd say a month from now, you'll see most of all the spaces closed in. And then we can start with the vital finishes like ceilings, paints, flooring, things like that. Putting all the fixtures, partitions, lockers, all that built in.
So, board, I was over there today, again, just to give them a little bit of encouragement to keep working. But it does look good. I mean, you know, it's coming along. It's exciting.
All that it needed, it is just.
Yeah, it does. It is. I'm amazed by cost prices. I know you hear on the news, you know, inflation's running, you know, lower, thirty, four percent versus eight, nine, eleven percent. I've never seen construction prices less than any double-digit increases in the last few years. I received a cost estimate on a metal roof just the other day that was one hundred percent more than what I was using six months ago. So, you know, we're looking at increases of anywhere from, say, fifteen to thirty to fifty to a hundred percent more than just, say, a year ago on some materials. And then the lead time is what's earning us a lot because it takes so long. Electrical panels, equipment, that's as much as a year of lead time. Mechanical equipment anywhere six to twelve months, things like that. So it's difficult right now. But there'll be a day when we're, when it'll all come back down. But it doesn't look like it's going to happen anytime soon.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
It's the pleasure of the board. Do we approve the changes, or? Ms. Murray made the motion to approve the request number seven, proposed change number eleven R. Rick, you second?
Mitch, I didn't catch all that.
The motion was made to approve the high school gym renovations for the amount of fifty-six thousand nine hundred thirty-eight dollars. Lacey made the motion. Okay. He seconded motion. So that motion and a second. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Vote carries three now. Item number ten, approval to add the girls' softball and girls' volleyball to the sporting programs offered at the Monroe City Intermediate Middle.
Yes, so, board, the intermediate middle school, Ms. Williams came to me with a suggestion and a request that we look at this opportunity to add girls' softball and girls' volleyball to the offerings at the middle school. That we seem now to have enough interest. We've grown enough to where we can support these. So I've asked Ms. Williams to come and talk with the board and give you the information that she has. And she's brought a team with her as well. So I want to turn it over to her now.
First, I just want to thank you for listening to our request. And Dr. Barker said that very kindly. I have kind of been blowing her up. And I said, I'm really excited. And she said, really? But I guess last year, Coach Hilton and I talked a little bit about, you know, you've got our kids. Can we, is this something we can sustain? And so conversations continued this year. And it was to the point, I was like, let's just, he actually brought it, let's just have an interest meeting. I said, let's do it. And you can talk more about the detail about that. But I believe for softball, we had like fifty-five girls come. And of those, I think we got over half of that, brought the forms back, like a commitment. And for volleyball, that came shortly on the tail end of that, because we have several kids that have mentioned playing volleyball. And co-opping sports, sometimes it's not always the easiest with communication, transportation. So I was like, if we can get it at school, I want to do that for our kids, you know? So Coach Whipple came over, and I think last count, seventy-eight showed up, something like that.
Yeah, I've had them work today.
You haven't worked, okay. So like, it's sustainable with our kids now. So then the next part was, like, do we have somebody to coach them? And they have been a fabulous team. And the biggest thing is, when you have coaches for kids, especially at the middle school level, that aren't in the building, it's hard to grow and sustain that program, especially going on to the high school. So that's, I get coachy with talking about it, because some of our kids haven't had that opportunity simply because of limitations, and it's not their fault. So I'm going to turn it over to Coach Brandon and Coach Hilton and Coach Whipple, and let them talk.
Yeah, I won't be too long here. But, you know, just kind of from the perspective of being a former middle school and high school head coach, the benefits of having an alignment with programs coming from future schools are, and I came to the cross-tack on that. We have the numbers to support starting that endeavor, sustaining that endeavor. And I think with, you know, our head coach's input from the high school, there are thumbprints all over that. That's going to be very beneficial for that vertical alignment with our programs and continuing to grow our athletic programs across the board. So I'll let them get a little more into details, but I think it's a big positive for the kids.
Thank you all for hearing us today. I appreciate it. Ms. Williams, thank you for being supportive in this. So as much as she blows you up, I do the same to her. And then Coach Whipple and Coach Whipple had the conversation, and I'm like, hey, reach out to Ms. Williams. And so here we are. Fifty-two girls showing up at our middle school for an interest meeting was a big deal for me, for the intermediate middle school to be able to take the kids that don't have the opportunity because of some limitations of our current co-op situation, and allowing them the chance to play something maybe new or something that they love, and they just haven't felt like they had the opportunity. And they just haven't felt like they had the opportunity in, in our current situation. Uh, but to have this many kids is a big deal. And as the high school coach, this is my second year, and being able to have your handprint on what's going on at the middle school makes the transition to high school much, much easier. Uh, I look at the success of some local programs, uh, here in our neighborhood. They're not next door, uh, Fairgate One, uh, my friend, she's an assistant coach there, she's coaching my daughter. Uh, their middle school program and their high school program flow smooth. It's a fluid transition. Uh, they come in with the knowledge, they come in with the, uh, for, for me, for softball, the language, knowing when we say this, they know what we mean. We're not going to reteach things. Uh, they come in with the basic skills and abilities. And I think being able to have that there at, at the middle school and making the transition, not only does it make our high school programs more competitive and, and puts us in a different, uh, level of success. Uh, I, I will, since she's standing here, I, or sitting here, I do think if you look at our middle school basketball program into our high school program, you already see that fluid. When kids come in knowing, it makes the transition easier and it provides for pretty immediate success. So for me, I, I'm excited and, uh, you all that know me, I'll do whatever we have to do to make this work. Uh, I'll do, you know, we have the field, we have all the equipment. Uh, I even told Ms. Williams, I was like, we don't even need money at this point, we, we got everything, let's go. Yeah, so, uh, uh, but we have.
Don't say that.
I will raise my.
Can you two get together, you know, you know the South.
I'll get with him.
Yeah, there you go.
Is that even do anything?
I can do anything. I can do anything. But, uh, just to have this, just to see that success already with basketball, I think, uh, it, it just, it rolls over and it gives opportunity to other kids, uh, and, and people in our community to, uh, to play and be a part of something. So, uh, I'm excited and I, and I hope this works out and, and we're going to, our high school coaching staff, uh, all four of us, well, three of us are on board, the other will be on board with her because, uh, as soon as softball's over, she transitions to volleyball. Uh, so, uh, but we, we have support from our local community, our high school players are, would be excited for this opportunity to be able to teach, be able to get out and, and just help others fall in love with the game that they love. So, but that's all I have. I think this is a great opportunity, not only for our kids, but also for longevity in our high school athletics. So thank you all for footwork and training.
Um, okay, so a lot of it's going to kind of be the same thing as what, um, Coach Hilton said, but my biggest passion is building programs. And what was really exciting about going to the middle school was I had no idea that we had that many kids interested in volleyball. And for the past ten years, volleyball's been one of the most, uh, fastest growing sports. Club is everywhere you go. The numbers are just crazy, the tournaments are crazy. And if we don't have a middle school program, the limit, that limits the kids to like club, and that's really expensive. And I know a lot of kids can't afford that. With that being said, we do have a great coaching staff and we have people that can get in there and work with those kids and keep it consistent. So that by that time they get to the high school level, we're not having to go back and teach fundamentals. Like it's us, we can hit the ground running, which helps both sides, right? They're getting taught the proper way how to play the sport, um, getting used to our girls, our coach is what it's going to be like, making that transition to high school a lot easier. Once they get to high school, then we're all about strategy. Um, we play in a very tough district at the high school level. Um, so the sooner that we can start preparing these young ladies for that kind of competition, the more success we can have. Having our girls being able to go in and work with those middle school students and create that kind of family environment. Again, coming into the high school as a freshman, that's very intimidating in itself. So being able to have those relationships with those kids, not with just the coaches, but our players, I think that's something that's invaluable. Um, we're just really excited about it and, and from a coaching standpoint, all of our coaches are on deck and willing to do whatever. Hoping it works out, um, like I said, that, that's pretty much it. Like I, I can't be more excited about it. So thank you for, you're really sent.
I just want to add one more thing, just support for Ms. Hoagland and Coach Britton at the highest level and working with Coach Brandon. It's like, they brought kids over, like some of the high school kids, and our kids are just like, wow. You know, so it, it's a true vertical alignment of growth. Like we're working real hard with that from Dr. Smith, uh, academically. So why not, and it's working, let's do it athletically too. Thank you for your time and listening. Well said.
I'm excited, I think it's.
Are you very excited?
Yeah, I mean, I, I think it's exciting times, but I mean, I, I think it's an opportunity that's, like I said, used to we couldn't because we didn't have the numbers. But now that we've got the numbers, it's, it's hard to, we've got to take, take full advantage of it, so I'm all for it.
Thank you guys for everything you do for our kids.
Yeah, I know.
That you want to put your off-season time into.
All the hours. I know, it's, it's tough.
So that'll be awesome that you, because your seasons will not overlap. Okay, I make a motion to approve.
I have a motion to approve the girls softball and girls volleyball for the women's intermediate middle school. By Ms. Murray, second, uh, Mr. Chadwick. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries three, oh.
Congratulations.
Go to work. Yes.
You have a softball game, so bye.
Thank you again.
That's hilarious.
Thank you all.
That's so fun.
Item number eleven, approval of the K eight math book, textbook adoption waiver request.
Dr. Smith?
Yes, Board, um, last month, uh, we brought to our recommendation for nine, twelve mathematics. And, and I told you, we would be, uh, forthcoming with our K eight waiver. So for, um, we're fortunate in our districts, we're already using high-quality instructional materials and the materials that the rest of the state is catching up with, um, with us on doing that. So ninety-seven percent of our teachers, uh, voted, we put that, put it to a vote, shared with them the materials that, um, are out of consideration and because we're already using high-quality materials, they're already on the adoption list and we're having success, uh, the state allows you to submit a waiver so you don't have to go through the usual hoops and jumping through paperwork and that kind of thing. Um, so for us in K eight, we use our ready classroom, which is already curriculum associates. We have been using it for years in the district. And so this is just submitted for your approval to say that we share with you the information about the waiver, that this is what our teachers have asked for us to continue to do, and we just submit that for your approval. Appreciate it.
Make a motion to approve.
I have a motion from Ms. Murray to approve K eight math book, textbook adoption waiver request. I'll second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
No, motion carries three, oh. Item number twelve, eth, ethics committee, if I can say that word, uh, appointment, I'd like to appoint Rick Chadwick, Lacy Murray on that committee with Chip Wood. I couldn't. They wouldn't let me. You're the only two here, so see what happens. It should be the other way around, I should be putting, yeah, that's right.
And you need one, you need one employee. It was Chip last year.
I took, uh, Chip again.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
So me and Rick.
You, Rick and Chip.
So that's an appointment.
Item thirteen, super tennis call.
Okay, yes, thank you, thank you, Board, for, for those decisions. Uh, I appreciate the thoughtfulness that, uh, the middle school and coaches put into their presentation and, and all the work that we're doing to make our school system better. A couple of things, busy time whispering, but we've got a lot of things that are going on, a lot, a lot of good things to celebrate. You know, our soccer team is doing well, our baseball team, tennis team is doing well, uh, won last two matches. So a lot, a lot of things that are happening, track is doing well. But, uh, it is that time of the year that we begin TCAT testing. So next week, that begins on Tuesday, and that will continue in some form or fashion through May the second. With the high school end of course testing, uh, begins then, uh, AP testing, statewide dual credit testing. So there's a lot of things that happen during that time, but those, those are the, the timeframes for that. And then of course, get, make sure you get on your calendar, that I-Learn graduation will be at the high school auditorium, May the eleventh. And then Lenore City High School graduation at the football stadium, May the twelfth. Both of these graduations are at seven P M. Um, we have our summer programming, uh, uh, plan in place. Uh, Mr. Walker will be, uh, overseeing that this year. And the dates for students will be June the nineteenth through July the twenty-first, with the week of July fourth off, uh, for both holiday and then some possible makeup days. Uh, we're still planning for what offerings we will need to do at the high school for, um, credit recovery and/or ACT prep. And we have a lot of construction going on at the middle school and the high school for CTE construction, uh, to be ready to implement some of our new programs that we're putting in, and expanded programs that we're putting in place, both at the middle school and the high school. So that's a lot going on. Uh, I also want to make sure that the board members, you know, you have a copy of our finalized audit here for, for your viewing pleasure. Uh, I want to say thank you and, and recognize Angela Bailey and her team in the, uh, finance department, zero findings on the district level. So thank you, Angela, that we, we really appreciate the, the professionalism with which our school system finances are overseen. And so we're excited about that. So at your leisure, you can read through that, that is the official version. We, it, it took a long time to get it this year for a lot of reasons. Um, and so that was delivered yesterday, out of the press, so.
Good news.
Enjoy that, yes, that's it.
That's it? You have anything, ever to say?
Thank you, Angela, that's awesome. Good work.
I'm really excited that it's my first year.
Great. We are too, by the way.
Yeah.
Yes, most definitely. Anything else? Your motion, will you adjourn? Motion of Ms. Murray, second by Mr. Chadwick, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Adjourn, thank you, Rick. You watch, you.